I'm walking around. All right, where's the, oh, you got the new.
I'm there, new.
No, we had a new sheet. Sheila gave me that. You want to read it or do you want me to?
I'll, I'll read it.
Okay, very nice.
All right.
Let's call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Chairman, if I can, public announcement of defiance. This is the regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January of this past year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January sixth, twenty twenty four, and the Two River Times on February first, twenty twenty four, as well as supplemented by published notice of July eleventh to advise of a hybrid form. The notice is also posted in the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Department of Health. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public. Addists have requested such information in accordance with the statute. An adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of meeting.
Great. Let's, uh, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Bordeloff?
Here.
Mrs. Bush? Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell? Mr. Paola?
Here.
Mr. Ball?
Here.
Mr. Nika? For Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, so we don't have much, um, much on the calendar today, so, uh, we'll get, uh, we'll get right to, uh, the administrative items. Um, why don't we, uh, why don't we just approve the minutes, uh, from the June eighteenth meeting? Um, and then we can introduce Christopher York. So I don't, I didn't have any comments on the, on the minutes. I didn't know if any of the other members needed to comment before we, uh, record we approved.
Just to update, the day, the date at the top says June sixth.
Yeah, subject to that revision, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second? Yes.
Bush? Koch?
I was not here.
Mr. Paola?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Anderson, I wasn't here. And Mr. Bailey, he's not in there, Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
So, um, as you all know, uh, Christopher York was hired as, as, uh, the new Borough Administrator and, uh, and he wanted to come and join us this evening. Um, so Christopher, that floor, floor is yours.
Yeah, just want to take a few minutes out of your meeting, just introduce myself. I'm Chris York, the new Borough Administrator here in Fairhaven. I come from the faraway land of Rumsen, just the other side of Guadavista. Um, prior to that, I was on the planning board for four years over at Rumsen, so I had experience working with the planning board as well. Um, I understand you guys have been talking about the master plan and discussing that. Um, so I never did a master plan myself, but, uh, but I had been involved in aspects of it when I was in Rumsen years ago. Um, so, you know, any help you need, um, obviously, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, with our budget, looking at budget, what the cost will be. Like, for twenty twenty six, right?
It's a reexamination, so we're starting probably a little early, I think, but, um, given that none of us, I, I don't know if Betsy, you were here to, to do the reexamination in twenty sixteen or not. You were, so I, I mean, I've never been through a reexamination, much less drafting a full plan, so, and neither anyone, uh, on the board, so I think, you know, it's good for us to get an understanding early of what's necessary and what a timeline might look like. Um, a- and that's what we're going to do over the next couple of meetings.
Right.
Uh, get the planners in probably, um, well, we're going to talk about that, right? So we're going to talk about all that tonight, um, and in our August meeting, and, um, and come up with a, you, you know, with a, with the skeleton of a timeline and then, and then start to address or form committees to address certain elements of the plan, if that's, if that's what's necessary.
Great, great. As I said, any, any assistance you need, any help, um?
Have you been, did you go through a reexamination process?
Go through a reexamination process. When we did it in Rumsen, I, I want to say it was back, maybe it was two thousand three, two thousand four. Um, definitely, we, we broke up into different committees and different aspects of it. We had different people assigned, obviously, we had a planner and a board attorney, uh, I'd worked with them as well. Um, so that I am familiar with, I've never done a full one, so, so that would be a undertaking that we'd all experience together. Um, but I hadn't been examined this before, so, but, um, just want to make myself available, anything you need. Um, obviously, my email address is there, um, contact, stop, see me any questions and then, um, obviously, any, any cost budgeting, you know, anything, just let me know anytime, so we can work that in twenty three.
Any early observations about the, the work of the ongoing Fairhaven government versus, uh?
Well, I started, well, I started my career here at Fairhaven actually back in ninety five. I worked here from ninety five to ninety seven, and then went to Rumsen in ninety seven, um, you know, it's nice to be back. Um, you know, I haven't really been too far away, so I've got to see a lot of it. Um, there's differences, you know, I mean, there's a lot to say, there's a lot that's different, you know, so we're certainly still in the evaluation phase of it, but, um, I have to say, we have a great town, there are a lot of great professionals, a lot of great boards. I'm impressed by all the boards I've met, so the volunteers in here is amazing and glad to see you guys continue to give it up.
Thank you.
But anything, anything you need, you're free to stop by, see me anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So the, the next item on the agenda was, was the continuation of the discussion regarding the reexamination. So the, we, we said the to-dos last week was, was for all of us to, you know, to take a look at the reexamination, to look at, at Doug's memo, which kind of outlines very well, you, you know, what generally had to be done. Um, my to-do was to put, you, you know, I, I put like a very gen, I mean, it's, this is a very general timeline, uh, I, I think it actually leaves a fair amount of time, energy, you got one, you got one, okay. Okay, so, um, you know, I, I thought we could walk through that together. Doug, rely on your sort of expertise and, and knowledge to let us know what, you, you know, what you think, what we should do, you, you know, that kind of thing. I thought we would take this meeting and probably next meeting, well, let's dive right in, right? So the first thing would be next meeting where you, you, you know, we as a board would come up with what we thought the process should look like. Um, be kind of final on that and send it to, you, you know, send it for Doug and for our planners to review. And I thought we should have at least a draft of something, uh, to be reviewed by the planners before it went to Mayor and Council and to the other boards, right? I mean, otherwise, like, you know, that, I, so, so, um, it is our plan, right? It is our, it's our job to, to run this process, so you, you, you know, I, I felt having our planners review what we were going to do and how, or at least have the, the timeline listed of how we were going to do it. Um, reviewed by the planners and then we can, um, in the September meeting, um, go over any of the comments that, that the planners had, um, and then circulate that draft timeline to Mayor Council, zoning, relevant committees for review and comment. And then that way, kind of, we just end up at a point where, um, we have at least an overview of a timeline um, that gets us to the, to the finish line, which is August, the August eighteenth, twenty twenty six meeting would be when we have to formally adopt the report. So I'll pause there for questions. Doug, I don't know, I mean, any, any comments so far? Betsy, any comments based on how it worked in twenty sixteen? If you, if you remember?
No, I mean, we didn't have a timeline, so it's very awful.
Okay, so, um, so then I said, okay, so, um, we, once we had the timeline sent to Mayor Council, zoning, it would have already been reviewed by the planners, um, we can begin to, to, um, construct the survey, right? I thought we all agreed last week that the first step in the process would be to survey the town. Um, come up with the survey questions. Um, there was a survey, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't print it out, but the, that's how the reexamination was kicked off last, the last time it was done, was, was through the survey. And so I thought then, while the, you, you know, the timeline was still being kicked around with formal adoption of the timeline in November, at the November meeting of this year, in October, we could begin construction of this, of the survey. Um, whether we included the planners in that meeting or not, we're going to be very conscious of costs, so I, I thought like, and you'll see a theme throughout this thing, is like, some of the meetings have the planners in them, some of them don't. Right, so I, I thought we could start with a survey without the planners present. Start with how we wanted to construct the survey, the questions we wanted to ask, the elements of the plan that we felt were important and needed to be brought out in a survey or, or important questions asked of, of townspeople, uh, and begin the construction of that, of that draft as a board on our own in a meeting without planners present.
Uh, can I just say one thing? I, I think we have a borough engineer that is certified in many of these areas and we don't have to pay him extra to attend our meetings, that's part of his job. So I think it would be helpful to include him. If, if we don't want to play planners for attending every meeting, we can certainly ask Mr. Gardella to attend our meetings.
Yeah, I have, you can see in some of the boxes, I have included planners and engineer, but we can just have Rich come to all meetings, that's great.
I would gladly suggest that.
Okay.
I have a question as well, I would guess the planners might have a set of questions that they have used successfully. So it would really be good, since we're using them as a resource, to maybe have a draft at least that we can look at, not limit ourselves to what they're saying, but if they would have a, a starting point, that might help get us going, as opposed to creating everything from scratch.
Good idea.
And another question I have, on page two, you write, first draft of reexamination report, that's on Tuesday, September sixteenth. So that assumes-
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, right? That assumes that we will not be completely redoing a new, not doing a new-
Yeah, I, I mean, I took, I mean, we should probably pause now, right? And, and start that discussion that, that kind of started the fourth, one of the meetings, right? Which would, I, I prepared this under the assumption that we were going to do a reexamination. Now, we, we, I don't really talk about doing a full plan versus a reexamination, but I thought we had leaned towards a reexamination rather than a full redrafting at, at, at the last meeting. I, I could be mistaken.
Now, that was my impression.
Yeah, that was my impression too. That we were not going to do a full rewrite, but we should talk about that now.
Is that, is that our discretion?
I mean, it's our process, it's, it's our process, yeah. So, well, the only thing that's, that's mandated by law, Doug, is, is, is that we, that, that you have to, every ten years, you have to, you have to reexamine it.
You reexamine to make sure that your master plan is in some document, plus, that it's meaningful, viable, and serves your needs.
So we iterate off of the original one that we referenced from ninety one?
That has what, my understanding, that has what is happening ever since.
Every decade. Okay. So the-
So it's like a compounding thing, right? There's a reexamination from ninety seven, there's one from two thousand five, right, and two thousand sixteen.
Well, not necessarily, the time was actually extended at one point, I'm just sure. We actually have more. Yeah, now it's, now it is, by statute, it's intended to be-
The question I had was going through this update to twenty sixteen, lots of things where it said recommended, I made a note in the margin, we did that, like, you know, because I've been involved for a while in various aspects of the town, so, oh, yeah, we did address that. So does that then get incorporated into the nineteen ninety one master plan as we've addressed that? So in other words, is that nineteen ninety one plan a living document and that it gets changed as we address the concerns, or is it static? Does that make sense?
Yes, my understanding of what you, again, I wasn't here for your last meeting.
Right.
My understanding is, is a living document. That's, that hopefully someone at some point in time-
Going in.
Either by way of attaching an addendum.
That, right.
Said, okay, these sections are no longer viable, these sections are now added. I, I have not tracked that, really, at this point in time. And sometimes what your planners will do, when they go through this process, is tell you, this is what happened, this is what we recommended, this was the result, these are outstanding, you should explore whether or not, you should, so, these are still viable and need to be addressed. Almost by reexam, by reexam, by reexam, not going back to the meeting time, but at least I've seen it time by about the last, the last three reexams, particularly where you continue to have the same theme struck. It wasn't, it's, that, that's why I said, one of the first starting points, what I recommend to you, one of the first starting points, is to do exactly what you've done. Look at your last reexam, let it identify the, 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 the issues. How many have been tackled, how many have been successful, of the ones that haven't been tackled, successful? You know, you raise a good point. Physically, Doug, did someone make a red line copy of the master plan?
Right, right, right.
I do not know if that was done.
Okay.
So we, we should do that in the next meeting. So in the August meeting, we should go point by point in twenty sixteen and decide if there's anything in the, in the master, in that reexamination that hasn't been addressed.
I can tell you, yeah, right now, if you go to page twenty three.
In this, and in the master plan?
The reexamination, the reexam, but, um, it talks about, I, I mentioned it in the beginning, so I have said, uh, the floor area limitations for being one to, the yard setbacks, we know, the recommendations that they be reduced, because it's our, it's our main street. It talks about we making that a main street, that people haven't changed since nineteen ninety one for that zone, so.
With, with the exception of, the affordable housing overlay zones changed it, right? So depending on which affordable housing overlay zone you're in, they will reduce to somewhere between, I think it's thirteen and fifteen feet. So, um,
But that is a very narrow application.
So in some of those-
Right.
Applications of laws, I would-
You have graphed the floor area ratios-
Yes, right.
Graphed, yes, poor area, and know those have changed.
Yeah.
And I know-
I should, building height in the business area change? And whether or not you could allow a third, is it a third or fourth floor? It went up to thirty, I want to say it went up to thirty eight feet, but, but again, you know, some, some of this stuff, um, was specific to the, uh, Fair Share Housing Plan that was done, whatever, five years ago, that's coming up for review, and some of it, my view is, it is not relevant to our community. I mean, some of these things require minimum lot sizes of twenty thousand square feet, we don't have very many of them in the business district. We, you know, so there, there are issues whereby the intent of some of these ordinances can't necessarily be acted upon because there are deficiencies elsewhere in the structure, so I think that, from my view, it all needs to be looked at very holistically. And, uh, so, so there were, by the way, you're, you know, but, 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 but I don't think enough, awesome, right, corrects. And, and actually, it kind of went the other way, in that it seemed like the master plan was saying a more compact business area, but we went up higher. So the, is, does that go against what the master plan was suggesting at the time? Well, I think that would be the direct result of the almost builders remedy suit that was brought. Exactly, that's what the, um, it's a band. You sort of lose your purgative as, in what you kind of get through, because it's going to be dictated by-
We may have to, we may have to pull exactly what was amended in the master-
Well, yeah, I think that's a good next step, right? Get the master plan and see if we're redlining, see if we're ad- amending, right, and see if we're standing as a tandem, right? And then we can go into the specifics of what's different, because I thought this, this was a pretty good read, I thought it's thorough reexamination where there was, you know, comments on like what could be done, what has been done, has not been done, you know, something that's to put a pin in later. I think there's plenty of them that are, that are accomplished, uh, you know, you can see things like, uh, Fairhaven feels natural areas, it says it's the biggest land mass in all of Fairhaven without an advocacy group, and now we have, we have somebody that, that, we have a group that advocates for it. So there are some things that were accomplished. Um, I think we get ahead of it by talking point by point at this point, then, right? No, we don't want to be talking point by point, I, I fully understand your concern, like, but, but let me ask a question, like, if we, like, like, if there's a recommendation here, the, the council has to pass an ordinance that would amend it, right? Like, there's not, there, like, we can say we think it should be, we could come back and say we think the setbacks should be X, but the, the council's the one that decides, the council decides.
I think you have to make a distinction as to, and this was a discussion you had earlier, distinction as to what the ordinance says you will have to accomplish the goal of the master plan. I don't want to take over the discussion. If it said we want mixed residential and commercial in our, in our being one zone, that's all the master plan has to say. In terms of now, what should the lot size be? I mean, we can make a recommendation that it should be comparable to, because most of our lot sizes in these blocks compromise the existing ones, I mean, we don't want to ignore what's already there. And most of these lot sizes are of this dimension, so we would think that an ordinance would be supportive of that. And then that gets fleshed out in the table that you're referencing, the table isn't in the master plan, the table's in our town board. It's involved. But it's, it's easier to amend the ordinance.
And that's why I asked, like, what comes first, like, do you write ordinance and then come back, like, you know, it doesn't really matter, it gets, as long as it gets done.
You can get as detailed as you want in the master plan, most of the time, it's the, here's the concept. You know, we want to provide residential, we want to provide commercial, in some areas, we want to have those uses mixed. We want to have play areas, we want to have areas for our schools, we want a good circulation home, and those are the kinds of things that are informed by the various elements that we, that in the outline that I gave you, here's where you're going to do that. Here. When your planner comes in, they're going to do additional things outside of the master plan, which will inform your determinations. If you suddenly find you have an extraordinary number of housing stores, or as a result of the last census, your age of your population has skewed one way or another. Say these, let's say you have fewer seniors, you're still going to provide facilities for seniors, but you're probably going to begin to start gearing things towards a community, what, what does a young population want? Because we'll be touched again in ten years. What does a young population want? We want playgrounds, we want safe areas for walking, we want bike paths, we, we're going to do those things. We want to be more conscious of, you know, update our environmental resource inventory and take advantage of that data. They're going to, they're going to inform us to what the last census was and how that changed things, that may tell you, plus surveys. You know, had. We heard a lot of people come and comment when we had Dunkin' Donuts, right? People out, it brought people out. What could we have changed in our master plan there? I, I don't know that you can recommend a total ban, you probably can't based on a commercial entity, but it's something to think about. Put the bone in, build it out that you would.
So, so let's, let's back up for a minute though, and let's determine, are, are we, are we going to go the reexamination route, or are we going to try and rewrite?
That's what I was just thinking, like, I think the beginning conversation, when we started talking about the student meetings ago, I missed the last meeting, was that we were redoing the master plan. And it seems like the last meeting we went for a reexamination.
Well, I, I think, I think we didn't decide any, right? So I think the, 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 the meeting we had last month, there was some discussion around costs, and that the, the cost, you know, to, to do, and Sheila alluded to it at the top of the meeting, that the cost to do a complete rewrite of the master plan is significant, and so that, now, significant, I don't know what that means, I don't know, I don't know what-
That's, that's where you're going to have to consult with your planners, and so you're going to add, what's the cost of a master plan as opposed to a reexam?
So it might be worth getting the, the planners in. I mean, I think next meeting is probably still a little too early, because I think we still have, as, as we go through the rest of the timeline, I think you'll see there's probably some more discussions that, that we, we as a board need to have. Did you?
Well, I understand, what, what, what is the, what is the difference fundamentally between a, a review, update, and a full rewrite, if we're able to incorporate all the changes and recommendations that we believe the community would want into the rewrite, if that's an easier path and cheaper path forward, maybe that's the way, but I would say that, you know, we then need to go back and look at the ninety two or whatever it was, and the two thousand two, and make sure that everything is incorporated into one document going forward, so that we're not in a position where we're continually looking back to have to reference a whole document. So like, let's, whether it's deemed a rewrite or, you know, reexamination or new, you know, what-
Salvation may be better.
Right, what are the inflection points that, that require new versus a reexam if you're changing certain things? I don't know that answer, so.
I, I, Doug, do you, generally, when do, do, do you know, in your experience, like, how aged master plans get, or they're re- rich?
I see few whole versions.
Yeah.
Very few, I can't recall one of recent versions. I will tell you, I'm going through this process development. We're, we use the underpinning of the nineteen eighty nine master plan, and we just had a hearing last night to amend the master plan. Not reexam, but to amend that, because our environmental resource inventory needed to be updated, it had been updated into, we had incorporated into the master plan in two thousand eight. And as a result of a couple of storms that came along since two thousand eight, our environmental resource inventory had been revised, but had not been formally incorporated into the master plan. So we had a public hearing on that last night, just to incorporate the updated environmental resource plan, because we're also going through state cost acceptance recently, we want to make sure that that was up. So we kind of, so we were eligible for sustainability purposes.
Yeah, I don't know if this is that material, but, you know, we're expecting the Environmental Commission to do the same thing, and we're cracking open the ERI, and that's our active process.
Are you looking for sustainability certifications?
I think that's part of it, you know, so, but it's also trying to look at, there are cross-references between the documents. Like, ERI references back to the last year.
Oh, a lot of, a lot of the data, the soils data, you, you, it's going to be the soils data, it's going to be management. The water resources, you're going to be saying, you know, you're going to have a lot of that.
Would there be any benefit to asking our planners what their opinion is on this?
I think, I think, I mean, I'll call, so, so we should probably invite the planners and Rich to the next meeting then. Right, I want to, I would like to have an idea of what we're going to do.
Because we're talking about something we don't really have-
I know, it's, it's-
Fundamental information on, and a planner would, and Rich Gardella would, I mean, that's their job. Let's see what their, we don't have to agree with them, but let's see what their recommendation is.
I, I think that's probably a good idea. Um, so let's, let's continue to, so, so we have to decide whether we're going to do a re, a rewrite versus a reexam.
Can we wait and hear from them? I mean, is that logical, like, can you?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to decide that tonight. We're gonna, I mean, I mean, like I said, the purpose of this was to just get all the dates and, and kind of sketch out. What a process could look like at a very high level, and then try and put some.
You, you could ask yourselves. Planner do this, you don't need to have an attorney do this. But if you, if you want to work and say, going back to our, the first comment. What does our present red line, the master plan, and red line is my shorthand, it's our definition of. All the reexaminations, what got put into the master plan, what didn't get put into the master plan? What does our master plan, with all the iterations, the recommendations that either did or didn't make it, what does it look like? That will, again, I can tell you whether or not. How live a document is, and where has it been static? Your master plan is going to be in static in terms of your source, it's going to be, it's going to be static in terms of your vendors, it's going to be static in certain units, you're not going to touch.
But drainage will have changed, because, because.
If for no other reason.
Yeah, so more change, yeah, yeah.
And they did, we're going through the stormwater, we just did that. Stormwater about it, to sure.
So is that something that the borough administrators would be tasked with? Like, to look at the master plan and then.
Ask yourself to do that annual committee, to grab. The master, what do we think the master plan is? And how has it been modified since the very beginning, and you'll know what your document looks like.
So are you suggesting that we, that, I, I just.
Or you can tell, you can hire somebody to do that. But I'm, I'm just saying.
So, so what you're suggesting though, is, I just make sure I understand, right? Is, you're suggesting taking the original document? Then taking the updates from.
I would look at the last three re-updates, I mean, maybe the last two, the last twenty years worth of updates.
And then plug into the ninety-one document, all those things that have changed.
What has changed in that document, so you know what you're. It will tell you whether or not you need to do a whole revamp, if we've kept current and it's a live document, well, then maybe it is. Maybe it is easier just to.
But potentially, it has been stagnant and it's being referenced.
I don't know that. You know that.
I don't, I'm saying that's, that's what we're discussing, potentially it has been.
I would, I would say, there's a binder upstairs that has the original ninety-one, and has the printouts of all the reexaminations.
I'm sure it is.
Same binder, so if you want.
All collected already, so in a sense it's.
But it's not collated, right, it's not like, if, if something changed in a.
It's replaced in that. No, that's what I'm saying.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is if you go and look at the ninety, like, all you can see is the ninety-one version of the master plan. No one's gone back and taken a red pen.
Right, and changed it.
Out, B one is now E twelve.
Right, or changed the circulation elements.
Update, correct.
With the updated, right.
So I thi, I don't know, we may be debating like, nothing that matters, like, so the expert can come in and tell us, like, here are the ti, if you go to the table of contents, there's like ten topics.
I would like to just know our best practices, right?
Regardless of what you do, you'd have to touch all those ten topics. Now, whether you want to call it a master plan and, and republish it as such, versus a more thorough reexamination that. You know, looks a little bit beyond, kind of like some general suggestions, it actually gets into the teeth of. You know, these are things that we've been talking about for fifteen years, maybe we should be a little bit more clear with our recommendations rather than the more general. You know what I mean? That's a decision we make though, as we're going through that process, but I think either way, you're touching on recycling, you're touching on land use. You're touching on like all those topic areas that are in the master plan anyway.
Right, you know, I just disagree with anything that anyone has said so far. Other than, other than the, we, what we don't know is how static or, or.
I think it's, you know.
Stagnant.
I think my, my concern reading through that is it starts to get watered down.
Well, it's also really confusing, like, how are you supposed to? I mean, how are you supposed to make judgments against, which is what we do as a board, make judgments against a master plan if. The original document is nineteen ninety-one, as updated four different times for the di, for any different, for any one element. Like, what are you opining against, right? And, and what you're saying, Doug, or what you said is like, you, you see very rarely towns rewriting the plan. I, I don't know that we would rewrite the plan more than consolidate it in some way, and take, yeah.
You know, when you reexamine, you would think that you then, this almost becomes a dead document because it's been incorporated into this.
Right, you almost take the document and you edit it, redline it, and amend it every ten years.
Constitution.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You're still doing the seventeen seventy-six, now, now we put an amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes. So it's not that I, like, I'm not saying I advocate for rewriting, and I'm just saying, it felt like that one. It just, I felt like if we do that kind of process again, it has the potential to continue to be diluted.
Yeah, I continue to know which end is off.
I spent a year plus, as a forward, doing something, I was.
Putting a thirty, forty page thing together that doesn't, that isn't really complete, because you need the three or four other. Documents together to understand.
Were they really advanced the ball, like, are we really advancing some of the things that have already been said in two thousand five and two thousand sixteen? Right, I'm totally on board, like, we, I mean, in there was the police station.
Yeah, yeah, it's so funny seeing all these things, yeah, yeah.
Things that have been ticked off, but the things that haven't been tackled yet.
Right.
This could be the opportunity where, you know, if the survey information comes back, it still says it's a high priority item in certain areas, like. Maybe that's the, the emphasis for us to push for that next wave, now that a lot of these, if you have all of this.
But, you know, it, it is a commander document. The way in which we started the ball rolling with the new, before your new. What was originally the police station turned into a community center was to put that.
It's not a word.
And then, you know, it allows mayor and council to look through the master plan, this is what we need to do. How do we go about doing that? And you check that off.
Because it's a cost perspective.
There's certainly a cost aspect to it.
That, you know, but I do, I am gen, generally confused about what we need to reference. I mean, is it the ninety-one version or is it the twenty?
You look at, you look at several functions, you look at the ninety-one version. And I would say probably the last two iterations of the reexam, which will have information in it about what was done before. Okay, these were the priority items during the last three. They talk about what the two thousand five reexamination was, changes in assumptions and recommendations. They talk about then what happened, your circulation plan got changed, these things got done. And you go to major problems in the two thousand five, what was done, and which problems then. In your next examination, which was a second in two thousand sixteen. We did these, we didn't do these, these are no longer relevant. And if you find out that everything is relevant, maybe you are. If you find you've been tackling these things, and you can continue to do that. You're going to find that's probably a more cost effective way than starting from scratch, because again, most of the dates weren't there.
I, I wouldn't suggest, I, I think what we're all suggesting and, and subject to talking to the planners and to Rich. I, I think it's, I know for me, I think we at a minimum need a consolidation. So you need to take somebody, us, or as, as we go through this process, we need to take the ninety-one plan. And swap out all the paragraphs that have been amended in the different reexaminations. And then decide if we're going to be, and, and then obviously, there's going to be things that we as a board add in this process. And then we end up with one single document, because I, I think trying to piece together five different, it would be the ninety-one. What is it, ninety-five, two thousand seven, and two thousand, I mean, there's four documents that need to be.
There's four reexaminations since ninety-one.
Oh, there's four, so five documents off. No, I, yeah, but, but I mean, there's five documents that conceivably you have to sort of. Pop around, pop, kind of weave together exactly where we are in current day. And so, I think at a minimum, we need, uh, we need to consolidate into one document. But that's, I mean, we should let the planners and Rich and everybody.
Everybody agreed, I'm going to test that, you can test that.
So, well, I think we're going to, so, I think next meeting, we have, we all agree, we probably need the planners at the next meeting. At least, yes, no, I, I think planners and, and Rich at the next meeting.
Started.
Yeah.
They need to do their homework before they, they come, they need to come with suggestions or.
And not to, not to pile on, but you, you mentioned there's the, it's fair housing.
Yeah.
Affordable houses, just.
Down here as well, there's a river road study from two thousand seven, that's probably has some relevant, still relevant, um, items in that, so. Right, it's not to pile on, but there are other, you know, there are other things that touch this.
Our active transportation plan too.
Yeah. There are how many? Twelve?
I think so, yeah.
Including the alternate, so, is there the ability, and there will not be actually, but. To just bifurcate it up and say, you're taking pages one through twenty, you're taking. But then, but then how do you, then, when we go to the next master plan? If there's no thread through it, how do we know that, you know, Betsy hasn't read twenty through forty there, which correlated to one through twenty here, which I read. You know, so.
We, what I.
I don't know, I haven't read, so the, the.
Right, what, what I was envisioning would be, you, you know. That everybody take an element, or the, there would be a topic area that, that each member would be in charge of. Maybe, you, you, you know, if a topic is significant, you may need two members to bifurcate it in some way. But you would go by either housing el, I, I'm sorry, you'd go by plan elements and do it that way. And then have, you, you, you know, that's kind of, as, as we continue to go through the timeline, right? We'd have to formally adopt the timeline. Um, and then when you got into twenty-five, you'd start with the survey, would be the first thing you did. We'd have an open meeting to discuss the survey results. And then that's when, w- once we have the survey results, we would then go through the different plan elements. And given the survey results, plus what we as a board feel need to be addressed. We would then divide up that work, and then over the next six months, you'd have, each element would have its own open public meeting. Where, you, you know, you would, you would go through, I, I, I don't, again, this is what the planners need to tell us how it's normally done, right? But I would envision having some kind of discussion or open, you, you know, open.
Yeah.
Debate or whatever by topic, to come up with, y- y- you know, to really make sure we understood what. The survey results that came back, and then be able to incorporate what, y- y- you know, be able to synthesize what the public is telling us into. You, you know, how the document should ultimately look and, and, and say at the end of the day.
Would the topics be, um, starting on page sixteen through page? One, of the document that we were given at last meeting, the twenty sixteen master plan reexamination. Those topics, it looks like they start with community facilities, then circulation, open space recreation.
Yeah, those are the, those are the, those line up to the elements.
Yeah, elements, yeah, yeah. So then those were the topics that, yeah.
And then, and then we have Doug's memo saying things that we might need to address, right? Or that, that.
Well, these are, these are, they were not intended to.
No, 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 I know.
Generate thoughts.
Right, so, so like, for example, like, there's, there's a statement on smart growth, restore resiliency and environmental sustainability. Climate change related vulnerabilities, you know, do we, you, you know, that's something, I, I guess, is showing up in plans, right?
Do we, do we have sustainability checks?
Do we need it, right? I, I mean. Cannabis legalization, reexa, I, I mean, electric vehicle supply may bring parking spaces, like. I need some things that we're going to want to address for, put in a plan we made, decide we don't feel like doing that.
If nothing else to say, though, there's been a change in legislation since two thousand sixteen. The governing body has taken steps to implement ordinances per statute. When our master plan recognizes these, find the consistency with the master plan and, and move on, or they're not. So again, I, there's an ordinance out there, we've already reviewed it, said it's consistent. It's not, it's not inconsistent to decide where certain areas should be or should not be. It is now in your quote-unquote not permitted use category. In this instance, or to the extent that recreational is, there are certain guidelines, just, just a recognition of it in your current reexam. That it didn't slip through the cracks, there's, there's a planning, our planning document addresses it, we've got the ordinances. It may be a little bit of, you know, back asswards, the way we did it in this instance. But we recognized it. So I, if I can, I'm going to try to bring you together, because I've heard a couple of things, I don't want you to keep beating yourselves up. I also think you might do well, and we can probably ask, um. Maybe Sheila can find for us the last, say, ten years worth of. The zoning board annual reports to you. Right, the zoning board of adjustment annually prepares a report that it shares with us to show you. What variances they've granted. What applications and things they haven't granted, that may inform, I, I, and we see certain things on a regular basis, only going to adjustment. Routine, we're addressing stormwater. We should heighten those types of things, maybe if we take a look at the. Adjustment annual reports, it may tell you, here's an area that we can look at, that much we learned. Now it's not a review, and we need to incorporate it, don't we? Invite more planners, and you may ultimately decide, we're going to invite everybody for roundtable discussion, get your thoughts, and then we may just hire one lead planner. You know, get an idea of, all right, like your idea, don't like your idea, you give us a proposal, then you walk upstairs. When you decide which way you want to go, walk upstairs and say, this is what we think it's going to cost. So now you're informing your administration, we're going to need a line item, maybe a little bit. Twenty twenty-four, maybe a little bit twenty twenty-five, you know, to make sure we get all of this done.
Do we know if we've got any funding set aside to help us with this?
For twenty twenty-four, I mean, we haven't, we haven't had the planners in any, and I'm sure there's a line item in the budget for planning. That we do, I mean, we haven't used one penny of that.
Right, we have line items for professionals, but they're not necessarily broken down.
They're not, okay.
How they're dumping down.
It's like a shared pool of money.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-four, now, for twenty twenty-five, I, I, I mean, we're going to probably have to have. We're going to have to. When, when is, when is that budgeting?
It's in the process.
Yeah.
Our problem is, is that you're only allowed to raise the cap by three and a half percent. Which gives us somewhere around five to five hundred fifty thousand dollars more in twenty-five.
That's not dedicated to planning.
Recycling and trash cost one of ninety-seven percent.
Yeah.
So that's going to take at least half, if not more, of that three and a half percent. So we have a budget problem. Do we know if they've allowed, the states have allowed us to raise? No. When will I? Um, pretty much, we've been denied. So, uh, it'll be formalized, uh, Chris York told me it'll be formalized in September, pretty much we're not. Is there a reason that they gave him? There, if there is a reason, I don't know.
Ask Chris, are there things for sustainable growth where we might be eligible for grants? And we can put money towards those things, begin to.
Right, well, we need to have those conversations.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm, I'm just giving you the reality.
Oh, no, no, no.
Our healthcare costs are going up seventeen percent, prescription thirty-three percent. So that's going to take a big chunk out of that three and a half percent increase.
I have a question that might alleviate some of our concerns about the master plan, the nineteen ninety-one master plan. Could we look at just the guiding philosophy of that master plan? To see how much it's changed from, you know, our broad vision of what we would like to see in the town? And the reason why I'm asking is because all these things, you know, like that breakdown that I just talked about with those different topics, that's always going to change. You know, there, because those are the moving parts. But is like that guiding philosophy, is that something that needs to be changed? And if not, if we read that and say it's still, yeah, this is pretty much what we agree with.
It's, it's all online?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean.
So a little Saturday time, yeah, on the. To to go review that.
So I think, I think what we need to do. For the next meeting is, we need to invite the planners and we need to invite Rich, because I I think. I I mean, I think we need some guidance, right? Be, like, like, just, we, y- you know, in in terms of. How to approach the process and what. What we as a board, you know, need to be doing right now and into next year, right, cause if you look at. At how this works, or how I I think it would work, we would have to have a final draft. By, y- you know, I I would say no late, I I had it here at the January meeting of twenty twenty six. But you would, I mean, theoretically, you'd have some time, but we, we would have, like. To avoid any problems, right, like, y- y- I mean, theoretically, members of the public can show up at any time, right, and and make comment or. While we're still in draft form, and then we would need to address that in some way and make sure, y- y- you know, we.
As, as I indicated in my memo to you, this task has to be completed. The only good dates that I could give you in my memo was then, okay. Okay, walk, let me walk back from the drop dead date. When our ordinance no longer have a hundred pence of a master plan. How much time to get the final, final draft? Final, final draft by June. So that you can then have, you know, whatever hearing you think you need, if there's any additional survey information, you want that, so you want. Yeah, we all know that in June, when you think it's done, the public is not on board yet.
But this timeline is predicated on the fact that over the summer of twenty twenty five. While we're drafting the reporter or sort of, y- you know, going through the necessary. Process of, of coming up with the, the different elements or changes to the elements. That there's public engagement throughout that process, and then the drafted, the draft. Comment final happens in twenty, so so the, the, that final process in twenty twenty six. Assumes, maybe foolishly so, that there's not gonna be some last. Well, as much kind of, of back and forth or debate, because we would already had that debate, and then further. We, before it goes to mayor council zoning, it's already been reviewed by the planners and and attorney. So that all we're left with is, y- you know, you, y- you know, it's been blessed by the people that do this for a living. And then it goes to mayor and council to be looked at, then those comments can come back. And we have plenty of time to incorporate those comments or not, it's our, it's our plan, not, not mayor council, but.
I I agree with you, I think a key part like throughout the process is good communication with the public. Right, I mean, you know, when we're opening for public for a survey and for public comment, and. Not just on the agenda for the planning board, but maybe consider email blasts that. Specify that this planning board meeting, we'll open the public comment, it's not gonna eliminate. The uh, chance of last minute surge of residents in here, but we'll maybe mitigate some of the risk of that.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to figure out, I mean, right now, we have no way, or maybe we do, I just don't know. Do we have any, any way of communicating in mass with the public? Betty Ann.
Yeah, she'll, she'll, I mean, disseminate any information that needs to go out.
They did it for the um, for the uh, leave and run committee and. And for the garbage collection contract, you know, the work, the workshops. So there's a lot of communication about all those issues, I think we should.
So Betty Ann can think of one.
There are physical voting or physical survey location, did I hear that? In the last reexamination, that you could write, that you could go fill out a survey, or was it all done on?
Well, there's, there's one online, it's a handwritten one, so.
Yeah, only one.
Okay, they have open houses for the um, for the community center. I'm sorry, for D B Ws, they're open houses there.
I mean, that's what I envisioned, that, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we probably don't need open houses for every. But I would assume we're gonna, we're gonna want certain open houses.
That would be a time to. The public, you know, before we finalize anything, but at least we have something to share with them.
You may find that your survey highlights. Where the bulk of the world is wanting to be, based in the public's perspective. We may also want to communicate with our department of public works, where do we anticipate. Different changes in our circulation we might have to address, what is the status of your. Like particularly, your, your physical plan, you know, I know you, you guys are on a regular basis from D P W. But that's also how we, this would have planned our new facility, again, there's ideas, what we're gonna do with that.
They had some great open houses, there was a lot of the community involvement.
And but that, that happened sort of more at the, you know. I mean, how many iterations did we do for the?
We, the, the public wasn't engaged in every iteration, was as we got to the end, and had to make the important decisions that the. That we had the open houses. You know, when we got it down to three choices, three ideas. Um, and, and we took, we took a survey, they voted.
That in a sense was a physical survey, cause you came in and you put. Color that you like on the architectural rendering that you prefer.
So next time, have a round, have a robust roundtable discussion with your planners and. Let them know, let them know, you know, we're at the very beginning process. We like, we like ID, we like ideas as to how we might tackle this process.
Could we ask them to come in with some questions, the draft questions, so we can kind of.
We're also in the process of producing a survey. We would encourage you to come with some questions that you think would reinforce the way these decisions. And that can be just a quick letter, email out to our team planners, Rich Cardella, I would make sure we're talking of this administrator. Each step of the way, that should not cost you.
I mean, it's a meeting, they, I think.
Yeah, they charge by.
I mean, I think we need it, I mean, I I.
But in addition to that, coming into that meeting, I would, I would task yourselves to have a pretty good knowledge. Of the underlying master plan and a reexamination report that comes in time, or at least those that are online. You know, sometimes a hard time to. So much happens with family. I mean, looking at a guy who's younger since twenty eight, so I I'm pretty much useless to him. But task yourselves to do that, determine whether or not you think the document can simply be amended one more time. Or is it so out of whack? Because even if there's something you really want to do that's, that you may think is radically different. You know, I, you've, you've got a good resource inventory, you've, you've got a pretty, you've spent some time for the circulation plan, I, you know. Your surveys, and you don't know what else you want to get of it yet, there are certain mandatory elements. And then there are certain optional elements, and the optional elements are where you custom make this thing for you guys. Really true, you know, you can, we are, in our, in in other municipalities. Tried to incorporate it together, I think we have, we have a technical review. And before it gets to this border, the professionals sit down. Because I, I don't know that you wanna get into the minutia of the size of the water pipe that's presently serving, you know. Let, let those professionals say, okay, we're gonna hash this out with the applicant in an informal. We've got somebody who's a part of the public works, we've got a planner sitting in on that, we've got an engineer on a very complex application. So that when it finally comes to us, we do our planning. We just in another municipality decided that we've been doing this back asswards all this time, because. As a condition of approval, you will check with the shade tree commission. Why don't we have a member of the shade tree commission on the technical review and from the very beginning? If we know, because their jurisdiction is limited, you know, we go to the region, their jurisdiction is limited to your streets, they don't call it private property. Tree cutting permits, but if we know that there's a gas line that you're not gonna put any shade tree. There, why are we gonna task the applicant for putting shade trees there, when we know full well, we're never gonna put them there, cause that's where the gas line is. This is a contribution issue, you know, those kinds of things. So you're finding out, you know, and I'm, I'm certainly finding out here, that it's true in that municipality, trees are important in Fairhaven. They're important as, as a monumental resource, but also as, as, as something that takes care of some of your stormwater. Trees drink up a lot of water, you clear cut something, and suddenly you got flooding and you can't figure out why. If they weren't, you know, ten trees on the property sucking with that water, those kinds of things. Do you want to have a new group sustainability list? You know, we, we're gonna have to get some, again, I'm just yapping, get it from your, your planners. At the, at the end of the day, I become your spy. I try to, I try to corral your ideas, I think you're, I think you're a good idea to bring your planners in. Some recommendations for survey questions, begin to work on your survey, ask yourselves with looking at your master plan and your reexamination reports. Bottom, I can tell them something, you've already started to do that.
Okay, anything else? I mean, I think we're at an impasse at this point.
I, I just would like to mention one thing. On the timeline, our October meeting is scheduled for October fifteenth, but that's also the ninth of April, that's a meeting.
I, I don't know if that's, I, I just counted third Tuesday. So maybe that.
So was it gonna do the following week?
I'm not sure. We definitely accounted for that in the beginning of the year and shifted some dates, I just don't have.
Thank you. I'm sure. And we haven't, yeah, we haven't determined what those things are yet, so. That's it, I mean, I, I don't think we have anything else. Does everyone know what their homework is, re-exam plan? And I'll, I'll get, we'll get the planners and Rich at the next meeting and. Oh, I, I, so. We have a, oh, are there people?
Yes, crazy cold.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Hi, Jess.
Am I one of your first uh, hybrid attendees? All right. Um, well, I'm joining tonight as a resident, uh, it's hard to remove the hat entirely, but um. My, my background's in planning and landscape architecture, but specifically, my work was in primarily. Um, downtown revitalization work, which involves a lot of different disciplines, but. I want to participate tonight and stay engaged with you. Um, I applaud you for beginning these conversations. I wanna tell you, like, I hear how conscientious everyone's being about costs. Which surely we all, you know, we're gonna be confronted with costs no matter what, but I think an outreach to. Our borough administrator and our finance team to understand how to fund. A, a reexamination versus a master plan update would be a worthwhile um, exercise. And, and, and I don't even know what that'll look like ultimately, I have some thoughts, but um. Ultimately, as a resident, as councilperson, as a professional that's spent time in this field. I, I, I don't wanna see us do anything with our master plan on a budget, right, like, this is one of the most important pieces of work. That you will do for Fairhaven, and, and it is one of the most, it is the most important planning document. For all of Fairhaven, and surely will be for the next ten years, so if there's anywhere where we don't want to let. You know, this is not, we're not gonna clip coupons to get our master plan right. This has to be done properly, and I'm glad you're gonna bring the planner in. I personally have had experience with master plan updates. I've read all our planning documents, and the reexamination was one of the first, there's really five things that were remaining outstanding, and. The reexamination, I'll, I'll try to keep this brief, but. You, you know, there's like five things, big things that came out of the reexamination report, and, and, which is just an exercise of going through the nineteen ninety one master plan. And every ten years, you look at it to see, oh, is that still something we haven't done, is it still relevant, okay. We'll carry it over to the new reexamination, and it's almost like a to-do list, I'm oversimplified, but it's a to-do list. That hopefully gets shorter every ten years, um, but it's not a. Thirty thousand foot look at, hey, what's changed since nineteen ninety one? Well, if enough things have changed. And that can be everything from weather patterns to shifts in demographics to um. Uh, water quality issues with, there are a number of large. Factors that we can't control that impact the future vision of a community, and. If there's enough of those, then there's a reason to do an update, and, and I'll say, um. Red Bank just did a very thorough update of their master plan. And the good news is, Mr. Chairman, cause. I mean, I can imagine the weight of this responsibility that you might be feeling, but the good news is, when you retain the right planning team, cause it isn't just one, but. It takes a team of professionals to take a community through a master planning process. The good news is, they came up with, they'll come up with the plan, they'll tell you, this is, this is a twelve to eighteen month process. We're gonna have four public meetings, we're gonna do this type of public engagement from the beginning, the middle, the end. The report outs are gonna like, that you're, they're gonna, that's like their initial work product. They're gonna give that to you after you've had all the back and forth and talked about it together, but. I guess I wanted to say, I'm paying attention, I'm thrilled that you're taking this up. This is one of the most important things for Fairhaven, and uh, I just encourage you to think big and, and know that. Yeah, I think, at least as far as I'm concerned, and I know Betsy, she and I both know how important this document is, so we're gonna be prepared to support your work.
Thank you, when you, when you say Red Bank did an update. That they, they rewrote their master plan, is that, is that what you meant by that? Or they re, or they just did the reexam?
They did, so the state requires, as Mr. Doug go, as Mr. Kovat said, the state requires, if we wanna retain our land use. Regulation authority and make our own decisions about how we're gonna develop our community, we have to have a, a master plan. And, and so every ten years is a minimum requirement to keep it updated. That I think of the update as a touchdown, whereas the reexamination is sort of a punt. Where you get close, but then you're like, yeah, you know what, we're just gonna rework the list. And come up and, and, and carry it over for another ten years, so it technically meets the state's um, requirements.
I see, so, so the update goes a step further.
It goes a step further because it allows you to look a, a broader lens, you know, I, I call it that thirty thousand. Foot list view, if we were gonna ask ourselves, what does the future of Fairhaven look like, what, what do we want it to look like? That's what our master plan speaks to, it's a very forward-looking vision with goals, and. I think of it as almost like the skeleton, um, it, it's goals and concepts. Whereas the regulatory language, some of which was discussed tonight, um, is the muscle and the tissue that brings those. Bones, that skeleton to life, so that when you do drive down River Road, it looks like a main street instead of a hodgepodge of. Um, you know, wonderful stores that we all love, but. Um, you know, wonderful stores that we all love, but it's the built environment that we're looking to create. And that happens through land use law and regulatory underpinnings, but, but that, it's very, we've been doing a little bit. As Mr. Kovat said, a little bass ackwards sometimes, but hey, that's the way it goes, but if we can get our. Vision very clear through this master plan process, then we could tackle those regulatory. Um, and land use issues with a lot more, and we, there's no reason we can't continue to piecemeal it, in my opinion, because the sooner we address it, the better. Uh, but if we have to do a piecemeal, so be it, in the meantime, um, I would just encourage you to think about. The long view, if this is the document that we're gonna live with for the next ten years, it uh, should not just be, right, um. An ongoing checklist, but a real, a visionary document, one that gives us a view of the future that we're all aiming for. Um, and they'll be informed by the values of the, of fellow residents and the people we all live with.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you for your good work.
I will, yeah, motion close. I have no, no executive session, is anyone else already thinking of discussing?
Just to recap, I wanna make sure it is clear, my, my initial comments, no, they made, no, 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 I, I do, I do. But I tend to look at everyone. Tracy's right, that's why, but what I was saying to you at the very beginning, the reason sometimes what you do in the same hearing of adoption of the reexamination. We should also list it as a master plan update, because it's two separate. But you're, now you're saying, not only did we complete our reexamination, check off our ten-year requirement. And now we're gonna put those right into the master plan, we go back to the questions you asked, okay, after you did that, did you, did the red line?